Notice is hereby given of a Friendswood City Council Regular Meeting to be held at 5:30 PM on Monday, March 4th, 2019, at Friendswood City Hall, Council Chambers, 910 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas regarding the items of business according to the agenda listed below. Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. I'll first invite Bobby Kirkpatrick up to give our invocation, and after Bobby prays, we're gonna have the Pledge of Allegiance by Jamie Lindsay and Isaac Wagner.
Heavenly Father, we're thankful for this city, for this community that is led by leaders like the ones in this room and by active participants from the community that are in this room as well. And, Lord, we're thankful for a great, long history in this town of trying to do what's best for all, to serve our community, our fellow members of society, and those around us, to be the best blessing that we can to others. And, Lord, I pray for this group, as they make decisions, as they look to the future, that they would look to you for guidance, and, Lord, that you would grant wisdom and discernment for them. Help us all to do what's best for most, and, Lord, grant us your wisdom and your peace as we make decisions. It's in your name we pray.
Amen.
Thanks, Bobby. Which one of you guys is going first?
I'm going first.
Okay, Jamie. Fire away.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thanks, guys. Good job. Item four, communications from the public. To comply with provisions of the Open Meetings Act, City Council may not deliberate on items discussed under this agenda item. Council may refer this item to the City Manager or direct this item to be placed on the next regular council agenda. PowerPoint presentations are not conducted during the citizen comment period. Out of respect for those speaking during public comment, please refrain from any outbursts or interjections to include but not limited to applause and/or disparaging noises from the audience. Doing so discourages others from voicing their thoughts and opinions and disrupts the meeting. Anybody? Melinda? Man, I read that all. Okay. Going to item five, which is our work session. We got two items. First item is Galveston County Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery, CDBG-DR funds. Brian Mansfield, future Fire Marshal. You can get four votes from this group.
Wow. Starting off the night good, aren't we?
Yeah, short.
It is short. It is short. All right. So, we're gonna go over some terminology real quick. Most of this, we've gone over a couple of times, because I've been over here close to the same topics before, but, um, Community Development Block Grant, HEAC is our Houston-Galveston Area Council, HUD is our Houston and Urban Development Method of Distribution, referred to as MOD, and for the LMI, referred to as Low to Modern Income. So, following Harvey, we did have a lot of funding come out, especially for the Community Block Grant. The HEAC has developed a MOD for this region, specifically for Galveston County. There's another pot that's been for Harris County. December 3rd, we came to you with a list of projects for Friendswood, possible allocations, and then back again in January with the actual resolution for the applications for three infrastructure projects and two acquisition projects. Basically, we're coming back tonight under the MOD. Friendswood was given actually 2.7 million for those infrastructure acquisitions, sorry, acquisition projects. And Galveston County, the Galveston County has specifically had 4.3 million for theirs. So, one of our projects was for acquisition and buyouts for the Frenchman's Creek area. The funding, the funding that we had available allowed us to go forth, and we put application for three out of the five units down there. Galveston County saw that application and wants to put some of the money that's allocated to them towards the finishing of that project. So, that's basically where we're coming back tonight, is letting you know that we did have those, we did have meetings with that group, very favorable. We've heard from most of them. The one that I think that we haven't got a hold of yet, it's not yea or nay, we just having problems getting a hold of one, but for the most part, we've had very favorable feedback from that group with interest. And then, so the timeline would be the day, meeting with you today, last week. I think it actually went out, then in February, we got a notice out for the comment period, similar to the other one. We've actually received quite a few comments so far, most of them favorable, some more so they're trying to figure out what the process is. Right now, the process is not very fine tuned until the application goes through and all that, exactly, exactly how it all works. So, until all that, we only have the answers for that, but we will make sure that we keep tabs on that and communicate with them what's going on through the process, those that have questions. And then, next month, I'll be back again with the resolution for support, asking for support for this. Just kind of as a note, the bottom three on Moss Point are the ones that we had on our application, and these were the two. I think their address off of Blue Heron, but all part of that Frenchman's Creek project. And then, have any comments, period, that anybody may have comments. As Brian indicated, if anyone would like, they can look at this application online and provide their comments digitally as well.
How many residencies, residencies or addresses or stuff are down there that are involved?
I wanna say I'm at 120. There are five buildings. Each building has four units.
And they're condominiums, right?
Townhomes.
Yes, sir. Anything else?
Any other comments? Anybody?
Nope.
I just wanted to say that I appreciate that Galveston County was chipping in to help us find that last bit, so we can go ahead. Frenchman's Creek was severely, yeah, severely, severely hit, and for Galveston County to step up and help us out with that entire area, I really appreciate that, so. We're grateful.
Very.
Just one quick comment. So, what do we think will be the best uses for that property going forward? If this passes and gets through, are we looking at detention there, or are we just looking at clearing? What are we looking to do with it?
Right now, it'd be clearing. I don't think we were able to put any detention as far as in the other, in the other applications. There wasn't the funding for it. However, I do know that there has been some shelving and retention type areas if possible. I know that Drainage District's interested in using that as well, as to help, would do what they can without a big funding source.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Part of the desire with a lot of these applications is to go ahead and assimilate the property so that we can partner with local Drainage Districts, Flood Control Districts, and provide the property for them to do the project. So, even if we're not able to secure funding, we can work with other agencies that can. And more than likely, there'll be additional funding coming down the pike as well.
How many times have those properties flooded?
At least four times.
And what's the status of those units right now? Are they all mucked out? Nobody's back in them?
Some of them have, some people had people back in. Some people have actually sold and other folks have moved in. But even the ones that have moved in weren't 100% aware of exactly how much it flooded. They were not here during Harvey, but still, everybody's favorable so far as being interested in relocating.
So, is that 20 individual owners dealing with, or?
There's 20 units. I don't know if there's 100, but there may be some dual owners down there.
Yes, there are a few that own multiple units, but 20 units.
Yeah. Carl?
Isn't there some private infrastructure back there that's actually owned by the homeowners?
The entire subdivision is private, privately owned and maintained, with the exception of the water and the sewer line, the streets and the drainage facilities, the storm sewer lines are privately maintained, and they're, they're pretty far behind on there.
Okay, so if, if for some reason, the two that haven't quite signed on yet were to object, they'd be responsible for continuing to maintain that on their own, or would the city be obligated to contribute?
On their own, up to the, to their unit. So, if it were the front units that decided not to participate in the buyout, the infrastructure to those, the front units would remain private, and then the city would rip out the back half on the portion we purchased.
All right. Thanks, Brian. All right, item B is zoning ordinance amendments associated with the downtown district. Aubrey?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Get up our other... Nope. Okay. Sorry. Figure out this screen. Okay, here we go. All right. Okay. The Planning and Zoning Commission's been hard at work again, so we have some new information for you. We didn't last time, so, just joint work session, we'll do it later. So, we've had several inquiries from property owners and developers about some zoning regulations in the downtown district, and that list kinda kept growing. And so, we, the commission formed a special downtown district subcommittee to look at a list of items relating to the downtown district, to see if there was interest in changing, you know, proposing any amendments to the district. The original downtown district was created in 2007. It used to be the original business district, and there was a boundary that was formed with the downtown district, and that created, you know, kinda got the ball rolling for the downtown district developments that you're seeing today, specifically more, the newer developments with the benches, pavers, and lights are indicative of our downtown zoning. So, what we'd like to do tonight is go through the list of items that the downtown, the subcommittee over, you know, looked over everything, and then we actually had a discussion with the full commission at our last meeting, and presented the subcommittee's findings to the rest of the commission. And then, so tonight, we wanted to bring those items to you all and get any additional input. No decisions are being made tonight. The commission's not even gonna discuss this again in our meeting upstairs. So, no rush. So, we're just trying to work through these items and figure out what needs to be changed. So, I kind of explained all of that already. So, the downtown topics that we reviewed are the boundary of the district, the distance requirement for head-in or on-street parking, facade materials, menstruation requirements, community overlay district items versus downtown district, permitted uses, pedestrian lighting, and LED storefront lighting. So, the first item on the list was the downtown district boundary. On the screen, it's showing the downtown boundary is in red. Only properties within the downtown district boundary are eligible to apply for downtown district zoning. So, it's two different items, the boundary and then the actual zoning district itself. On the map, the downtown district zoning is in blue, the light blue, and this should be pretty current with all the properties that have already applied and received downtown So, in order to change the downtown district boundary, an amendment to the zoning ordinance is required. So, we would just, we would change the boundary and adopt a new map to go with the zoning ordinance. And I think, I'm gonna go back to this map real quick. This request was actually specific to, a specific piece of property. The subcommittee also looked at the entire boundary to see if there was any other areas of concern or interest in changing. We didn't really come up with anything, but the area of interest is at 108 and 110 Whispering Pines, which, which is right here in this area here. 108 is within the boundary, and 110 is outside the boundary. It's the long, skinny property here, and then the red line is the boundary.
Both are under single ownership currently, 108 and 110.
And they're both currently zoned, single-family residential. So, some of the things that the subcommittee looked at was the items that are tied to that boundary, other requirements. So, one of those items is the Neighborhood Empowerment Zone, which is a resolution. It waives development fees for for-profit businesses that are zoned downtown district. There's two areas of the Neighborhood Empowerment Zone. One of them weighs development fees for Area A. Area B, you also have to be incorporating benches, lights, and pavers into your development to get your fees waived. That's a resolution. The amendment process for that is one reading by council to get changed. That amendment is not required to change the downtown district boundary, and it would be required for the new tract to be able to have their fees waived. That resolution would have to be amended for that. The other item that's tied to the downtown district boundary is the 4B sales tax. This is overseen by FDEDC, and it's the expenditure of the sales tax dollars for the downtown. The amendment process for this is a public election. Again, it is not required to change the downtown district boundary. It's independent, and, but it would have to be amended in order to be able to spend those sales tax dollars on that particular property.
Council's benefit, real quick, the width of 110 Whispering Pines is probably 125 feet wide?
Uh, 110?
Yes. And I just share that with council. If, if the boundaries, boundaries were to get expanded to include 110, it would not be my recommendation to use any of the 4B sales tax dollars on that property. It's minute in comparison to the remainder of the district. It's not worth the, another election.
So, if the downtown district boundary was not changed, the property owner would have options to remain single-family, apply for another commercial zoning district such as Community Shopping Center, or to apply for a planning and development. They could designate downtown district as their underlying zoning and use that as the regulations for that property. But, a PUD would require a specific site plan. It's not just a carte blanche zone change. They would have to have details to be able to apply for that.
If I may, about how much would it cost, do you think, if they were to pull a PUD together? About what is the expense to the owner for something like that?
Um, I guess about $5,000?
It would depend on the complexity of the plans. There is a subsection in our zoning ordinance that allows for a conceptual plan-type nature that would require a site plan approval by P&amp;Z at a later date, but it's still, any development, you're looking at least $5,000 to develop sufficient plans for an application.
Okay. Thank you. So, this is just a comparison of the, of the zoning districts, just being discussed here. So, downtown district, it is a mixed-use district. It allows residential on the second floor and up. Minimum lot area for that district is 15,000 square feet. Building height maximum is 70 feet, a max of four stories. Your side yard setback adjacent to residential zoning is 15 feet, and your maximum lot coverage is 60%. For Community Shopping Center, that's a commercial district. There's no residential allowed in that district. Minimum lot size is 15,000 square feet. Building height max is 40 feet. There are exceptions if you provide additional setbacks, but I don't think this property would be big enough to qualify for those. Side yard setback adjacent to residential zoning is 25 feet, and maximum lot coverage is 30%, and then, single-family is, you know, what the property's zoned currently. So, it's residential use only, no commercials allowed in that district. 11,600 square feet is the minimum lot area, maximum building height 35 feet, and side yard setback of 10, and maximum lot coverage of 35%. Front yard on downtown district is zero, CSC is 30, and SFR is 25. And downtown district is zero, but, and actually, that's a side street. They just have to do a 10-foot landscape buffer with a 6-foot sidewalk on the side So, this is just some scenarios, and I just used the current downtown map and changed the colors a little bit. I did change, 104 Whispering Pines is on for second reading tonight, so I put the light blue color on that one. We have joint public hearing for this property tonight to change to downtown district, and so, this is the scenario that would currently be allowed. The 108 is within the boundary, and then 110 is outside. If we adjusted the downtown boundary, that's what it would look like, and 110 could opt into the downtown. Yes, sir?
So, 108, excuse me, 108 is the Reach Church right now?
104 is the church.
108 is the old house closest to Whispering Pines, the brown house right next to the house, to the right of the church, if you were standing on Whispering Pines staring at Reach Church.
So, it's to the right?
To the right.
Is that, is that Harris's property?
Yes. Both 108 and 110.
Here? That's single-family residential.
It, it's, it's part of a property that fronts Quakers Drive, Quaker Drive.
Yes.
Is it occupied? If there's not a house, why does it, is there a better neighborhood?
Yeah, it's one of these owners, right, either that one or that one own that piece, and they access it from Quaker Drive. So, these are just a few other scenarios that the subcommittee kinda threw out, was the option of doing a PUD on both of the properties. Again, they could, they could use the downtown district zoning regulations to develop the property. There's CSC zoning as an option, and then just leaving it as SFR. So, just again, the 4B sales tax could not be expended on 110 Whispering Pines in any of the scenarios, and if the downtown boundary was expanded, the zoning of the property was changed, and the NEZ Resolution amended development fees could be waived for 110, and all of that's already applicable to 108.
Why, if we amended the downtown boundary lines to include 110, why would that not be eligible for 4B taxes?
So, when the proposition was put before the voters in 2016, it specified the boundaries of the downtown district.
So, if we changed that, then that would not qualify.
Correct. But as I mentioned earlier, in the big scheme of things, that property is so small in terms of the public infrastructure that could possibly go in front of it, that it wouldn't be worth an election just for another 100 linear foot of pavers, or however wide it is.
Yeah, thank you.
That is all of the information on the downtown boundary. At this time, the subcommittee's recommendation is to not change the boundary, and I think the rest of the commission, we didn't take an official vote, so I can't say that.
Aubrey, I guess what I really say, the subcommittee went... The subcommittee committee went back and forth several times, looking at all aspects of it, and we thought for tonight's meeting, it made the most sense just to present the facts on both sides, the pros and cons, and it would lead to ultimately, if it goes forward to a vote at Planning and Zoning and a recommendation to council.
From staff's perspective, ultimately, whatever's decided by P&amp;Z and council is fine. We can work with it. I would recommend, however, that both properties are zoned the same thing, whether that's downtown district, whether that's PUD and CSC or remaining single-family. Simply put, having two sets of zoning criteria, two sets of setbacks, and other limitations make it very difficult to develop. So, if we were to rezone one of them to CSC, but the other one go to downtown district, having to comply with the varying front setbacks and then different height restrictions will make it very difficult to sell to somebody that's able to develop it.
We did have a follow-up subcommittee meeting Friday morning, and the suggestion was also made to notify all the property owners within 200 feet of the area that's being considered and invite them to the next Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, just so that everybody's aware of what's being discussed. I mean, it's, it's not a required notice, but it was something that we bounced around to just inform more people.
What does the current property owner want?
The current property owner would like the boundary to be changed and wants to change to both of his properties to the downtown district zoning.
Just the boundaries or the zoning, too?
Boundary and zoning.
Addition of boundary, direction of zoning.
And the only reason I ask from a process perspective, it could follow the same path that Reach Church did, and that is, until they had a viable project or viable developer before them, not to pursue the rezoning. And as you recall, it went through a two-step process, most recently, the second readings tonight. None of the property owners adjacent to it had any complaints because they knew what the end product was gonna be.
That's always gonna be the best way to do these things, right? If everybody in the area knows exactly what's coming in there, what the planned use is for that property, then it's a lot easier to get the, because eventually, there's always a residence, you know, next to the downtown district eventually at the border, and that person has to be on board with what's gonna happen there. We want everybody to be satisfied. So, it's a lot easier to get the people to, you know, agree when they know exactly what's coming in, like Reach Church did. So, I'd love to see that plan come together before, you know, we had to take a lot of action up here and get people with pitchforks coming at us, because, you know, we're putting in a bubble's car wash or something. We're not doing it. Shouldn't you not even say that? Strike that from the record, right?
To your point, Mayor, potentially a 70-foot-high building next door to a residential might be not attractive.
Yeah. Nobody wants a shadow across the backyard, permanent shadow.
Do any other commissioners have any other points about the boundary that I missed?
Any, any idea of when this will be, is this a potential to be brought to us in the near future, or, do we have any feel for that, or is this just kinda planting the seed that this is being bandied about and we need to...
So, the committee, we still need to, like I said, we're getting information tonight, so we still need to continue the discussion. I anticipate, so our next meeting isn't until March 21st, which would be too late to advertise for JPH and all that for April. So, May would probably be the earliest that we could bring all these changes back, and we could list them individually on the joint public hearing, and so we can vote on them individually.
Are you talking about the properties?
Uh, no, the, the topics. So, the boundary adjustment could be, so that if some, you know, if one item is not approved and the other one is, they're not all tied together.
We don't have a pending application, though, rezoning application currently.
Um, kinda. I mean, but not, not formally. I think they want to apply, but...
Well, that, that was my, that was kinda where I was going, is, you know, I mean, do we have a ballpark? Formally, is this gonna be something that gets... Formally, is this going to be something that gets before us fairly quickly? Or is this something that...
Yeah.
There's no rush.
Yeah, the earliest would be May.
Earliest would be May.
I just want to say, I think, you know, we've been talking about the Reach Church. They did the perfect model. Reach Church came to us about six or seven months ago and tried to rezon, and there are a lot of mad people in this committee, in the room. They went back, they tabled it, and they went to talk to all the property owners. Then they came back with a plan, showed everyone what's going on that property. They went through no problems. So I think the process needs to be followed the Reach Church model. They did it perfectly.
Aubrey, since this is in the early stages of looking at all the various ordinances within the downtown district, is there some way... Because Mayor Mike and Carl and I were at the last FD-EDC meeting, and they were having a lot of, you know, conversations and trying to get their lighting together and that sort of thing. And when you read through the ordinance right now, the light poles, the maximum height is 12, and they're looking to maybe get at least 16 feet high, because if you're going to put banners up there, you'll recall, they don't want people hitting them and that sort of thing. I don't know if it's something that we can move forward with or if the whole diocese up here is in agreement. Maybe y'all could look at that, too, and increasing the heights of those lights for those people, because they're working really hard, and they're trying to figure out what type of lighting that they're going to have. And I know that we were there, and it was really a struggle for them, especially when we have an ordinance that says maximum height 12 feet. So I just want to let y'all know that I'm fine with it, and I don't know about anybody else up here. But if y'all could look at that, and while we're doing all these ordinances, maybe incorporate that in it.
Yes, sir. That's actually one of the items that was on our list. And because FD-EDC hasn't really come forward with that recommendation, we don't have any recommended changes at this time. But it is on our list. We're communicating with them. So once they do come up with a plan, if we need to change the design criteria manual, we can definitely do that. P&amp;Z isn't required to make a recommendation because it's adopted by resolution. But since they oversee the zoning stuff for the downtown, we typically do make recommendations for that.
Right. That's exactly why you're hearing about some of these tonight, is how to get better aligned with the various city groups and commissions. Just that's what the purpose behind all these that you're going to hear about was, that very thing. And lighting, as Aubrey said, was absolutely on there. We had FD-EDC show up to multiple meetings to work with us on that. We just took that one off just because they weren't ready yet. But when they are, that'll come back on.
If I could just go back one minute. I really liked your chart where you showed the differences between the downtown district, CSC, and single-family residential. I would like to encourage the property owners, the Harris family, to take a look at these differences and see which one they think will really give them the flexibility that they're looking for on the selling of their property. I think this is a very helpful chart. Good cheap sheet. So thank you for putting that together, Aubrey. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
When you guys look at this stuff, is there a concept? I mean, it seems to me that where we're... What we're ending up with is we add somebody to the downtown district. If they happen to be adjacent to the downtown district, and the property owner wants to be in the downtown district. But where does it stop? I mean, is there like a logical concept that, you know, this would be downtown district, and anything outside, it really wouldn't be? I mean, do you have a feel for that?
Any property that was rezoned to downtown was within that original red boundary that's highlighted up there. So the thought process was, if you're within that boundary, we've already evaluated and felt that it should be included in the downtown district discussion. This would be the first time in which we're discussing potentially expanding the boundaries to include properties that were not part of the original business district and were not intended to be in downtown. So I mean, from...
Yeah, it's still my question is, you know, is there some sort of guiding principle we can look at here? Because you can look all over that district and see, well, there might be a property here, a property there, you know, that you could start to add it. And it's just a question, that's all.
No, absolutely. That was a major topic that we discussed. And it's always intended consequences and unintended consequences. What would be a floodgate or anything like that? We tried to look into that and look at other opportunities. What might else show up and what other... You know, because we couldn't just do it one time. If we do it once, then what is the rationale for doing it more than that? And so, we haven't developed such a criteria, but it was definitely something that we can discuss some more, and we have discussed at length.
All the other areas, if you were to look at the entire boundaries, have a natural terminus. And what I mean by that, they back up to an existing subdivision that's established. Or it backs up to a street or a thoroughfare that makes a natural boundary between the downtown district and what else exists out there today, with the exception of Whispering Pines. It ends at an arbitrary, in my estimation, I wasn't here when the boundaries were originally established, but it ends somewhat arbitrarily. Honestly, I would have been fine if had it gone all the way to Cowards Creek, simply because that's a natural dividing line between one area, whether it's the single-family or it's the downtown district. If you look at 2351, logical conclusion. If you look at all the properties that come along 518 on either side, you have Woodlawn behind the Old Junior High that's a natural division between the subdivision that's around around the Old Junior High versus the Junior High that fit nicely into the downtown district criteria. It's only when you... And when you go further south towards 528, Cowards Creek is the terminus for the downtown district. It's only when you get to Whispering Pines that, yes, on the southeast side, you have a road that's separating it, but going northeast, you don't have anything, no logical terminus. And it's unfortunately, when the line was drawn, it separated a single-ownership property to two different... Because then I say unfortunate, it's under one ownership, but it's two properties.
Councilman Rockets wanted to clarify that the discussion to expand the downtown boundary was not initiated by the downtown committee or the PG Commission. This was initiated by the...
The next item that we looked at was the distance requirement for head-in or on-street parking. The current requirement for head-in or on-street parking is 400 feet from 518 or FM 2351. We looked at this, and we looked at the driveway distance requirement from a major thoroughfare. So that 518 would be a major thoroughfare, and if somebody was to add a driveway on a side street, it would require a separation of 75 feet. The subcommittee members also went out and looked at three or four other properties that already have some on-street parking. And we contacted the developer that's asking for this change, and the 75 feet works for him, for his particular development. But we felt, like I said, looking at the other properties that already have that, it would be a fair and reasonable distance. A parking space is typically nine by 18, nine feet wide by 18 feet long. So that would give you about three cars stacking space from a stop sign at an intersection and then allow the on-street parking behind that. The on-street parking allows for more flexibility in parking options, and then it also adds to your pedestrian environment, allowing people to park closer to stores and storefronts and be able to access those areas. Anything else to add on that?
In the current, any current parking, head-in parking that doesn't meet this requirement, they would be grandfathered?
Yes.
Just out of curiosity, how far is it from 518 to Alton Todd's first head-in spot there next to his building?
I think we measured that one. Was it 125 feet?
It's less than 75 feet, quite a bit less. What we did, each of us individually walked out into the area, kind of stomped around and said, where would we feel comfortable? Then went back and measured it, and we all came up with pretty close to this number.
It's not fair, Richard. Your steps are a lot longer than everybody else's.
Anything else? The next item is facade materials. Several years ago, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended to city council, and we changed the facade material requirements for all of our commercial zoning districts to not allow wood or cement fiberboard as a material for facades of buildings, commercial buildings. Most of those districts already had a... Didn't allow metal buildings, and then we added the wood and cement fiber, hardy plank to that list. The downtown district was included in that. So currently, cement fiberboard is not an allowed material. We have several buildings within the downtown district that have the lap siding. I can't confirm if they're actually hardy plank or what material, vinyl siding. But we felt that the hardy cement fiberboard is a masonry product, and we had a discussion about allowing it to be installed in a lap siding fashion to match some of our older, you know, Quaker styles and not the flat 4x8 style. So we did incorporate that wording for the downtown district only. All the other commercial districts would remain as-is. And...
I guess the only thing I would add to that is, as we went through and looked up and down and through Friendswood, we found many examples of the lap siding of various, Aubrey said, various materials out there. So we thought adding one more, and we thought that visually, it would look very similar to what was already existing.
The next topic is fenestration. So this is openings such as doors and windows that are in the facade of a building. The purpose of the fenestration, we only have this in the downtown district. The purpose of that is if you think of your old downtowns that have courthouse in the middle and then all the buildings around it, they have all the retail storefronts, you know, from back in the day. And so, those retail storefronts create inviting spaces for pedestrians and shoppers. And so that was the intent of the downtown district. And we're not proposing to do away with it. We've had some uses that have had difficulty incorporating the fenestration requirements, particularly on the backs and sides of the buildings. Some of those uses have been a pharmacy. They have security issues with that. A bank has security concerns or drive-throughs, you know, on the backs of their buildings. Coffee shop with the drive-through on the side. And then the library, even our own library, had bookshelves lining walls on the inside. So it was, you know, how do you put windows when you have bookshelves? So there's been some instances. We've worked through all of them. We did add a requirement a few years, or an allowance a few years ago, to allow faux windows. I don't know that that's working out real great, because when you try to make something look like something else, you know, a lot of times, it doesn't turn out great. So our proposal is to do away with the 25% fenestration, basically on the interior sides and the rears of the buildings. So this is what's required now, the 40% facing any part of the building that's on the right-of-way first floor. 25% fenestration is required on all other sides of the building. So second floor, interior, it doesn't matter. So our proposal is to keep the 40% on your street fronts on the first floor and to keep our 25% on the second floor and up, actually on all sides. I should have left the 25s on. But on the first floor, not to do away with the 25% there and there. So on the interior sides on the first floor, no fenestration requirement. They'll still have emergency doors that are required, egress doors that are required, but just not that 25%.
And I guess I would say then also not the fake windows and shutters.
Yes. Questions? Y'all are too easy. The next item that we discussed was the community overlay district requirements versus downtown district requirements. The community overlay district is an overlay. It's additional requirements on top of our base zoning that applies to properties that front all of our major thoroughfares. So these additional requirements, we did a chart and kind of tried to compare them. The items that we narrowed it down to that also... There's also a statement in the zoning ordinance that specifically says in the downtown district that the COD requirements do not apply to the downtown district. So we looked at those requirements and decided the ones that we thought should be included in the downtown district, and those are the earth tone colors and requiring the utilities, so the service laterals from the property line in to be underground. Chapter 14 of the building code also requires service laterals to be installed underground. But we felt that it didn't hurt to repeat that, since the COD does as well. The community overlay district does not allow garage bay doors to front the thoroughfare. So we do require specific use permits for gas stations in the downtown, so they're not prohibited. But this, if they did bay doors, wouldn't allow the bay doors to face 518 or 2351. And then the screening materials, so screening of AC units, dumpsters. Currently, the downtown district requires the screening, but it doesn't require that material to be the same as the building or as the COD does. Yes, sir?
Is that chart there indicative of what you're after? Or is that what is currently...
This is currently what's in the ordinance.
That's what's currently in place. So the change would be to go from no restrictions on exterior colors to earth tone? Clarify that no more, because there's other rules in place that prevent overhead wires for new service lines, but this would just reiterate it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then you would not want any garage door facing the street?
If there's any of those existing, they're allowed to remain. The only time that would come into play is if, you know, they were damaged or the...
My recommendation might be, if you present this again, to have a third column in there that, you know, downtown district current is the one that you've got up there as downtown district, and stick another one in there that shows downtown district proposed.
Okay.
I mean, the blue is good, so it identifies which ones were modifying. But, okay. That's all.
Aubrey, on the garage bay doors, so I'm understanding there really couldn't be any additional car repair shops or gas stations built because the bay doors could not front 518 or a major thoroughfare. It would have to go on the side. Is that what I'm hearing?
They could... Ford Automotive, I believe, has a really long skinny building, and they don't have any bay doors fronting the road. They're on the side, so...
So the current ones would be grandfathered, but any new ones would have to go on the side?
Right.
I would just add, not in the downtown district, but the new tire store over there on 528, none of those doors are facing the street either. And that was done.
Yes. Grease monkeys going in down by JJ's Car Wash. We applied the same regulation to them, and we have another proposed quick-lube place, and they're complying with the same.
Basically, this section, we found when we looked at the CSC versus the downtown district, we expected to see the downtown district be a little bit more severe. And in some cases, it was less severe. It was... And so, if downtown is your showplace, we wanted to just kind of look at the differences and say, are we missing something here? And these are the exceptions we found.
The next item is permitted uses. Those uses are defined in the permitted use table in the zoning ordinance. We do not have any recommended changes at this time. If anybody, council, has any knowledge of any of those uses, please let us know. In the permitted uses, staff, when we get inquiries throughout the year, we'll make notes, you know, of things that, you know, come up or that are recurring. The commission also reviews the permitted use table once a year. We actually, it's on our to-do list to do here, probably at the next meeting. And if we have inquiries from, you know, property owners, we'll visit those items individually as needed as well. The downtown district pedestrian lighting is another item. Like I said, that requirement is in the design criteria manual. We're not recommending any changes. We are anticipating something coming from FD-EDC. LED storefront lighting?
Aubrey?
Yes.
Back to the... I don't know if it's going to fall under one of these areas or not, but... but we were talking about the lighting from the poles to the boxes on the building. Do we have any ability to control any new overhead wires being installed, begin requiring them to run anything underground moving forward?
In the right-of-way?
Down 518, yeah.
Those are managed by Texas New Mexico.
Well, it's Texas New Mexico, it's Comcast, it's AT&amp;T, and somebody was just running new wires through there not six months ago. I'm not sure what that was. I'm not, not necessarily advocating at the moment that we try to push the issue, but for anybody that's wanting to run new wire down there, can we begin requiring them to run it underground?
I don't know if that can be worked out with agreements with them. I know-
I guess what I'm asking, do we control that or is this text out high on or?
It, it would be under our franchise with that company and based on my memory, I don't think we have a provision that we can require them to put it underground, but I'll look at it and make sure.
My understanding is that we don't control those franchises at all anymore and that's all done through the state. Is that correct?
For electrical, Texas New Mexico and Center Point, we have franchises still. It's allowed by, by law.
So some are and some aren't?
The paywall TV things are through the state, but we can still enter into franchise agreements with electric and gas.
Okay. So the answer, I guess, is it depends and?
Well, the AT&amp;T lines are the ones that FDEDC paid to get buried as a downtown improvement project. So those were cable lines that were buried.
That was a little short, but it was somebody who was trying to control cable on the poles and it wasn't on the other side.
Yeah, Texas New Mexico.
It, it was Comcast. It was Comcast.
Texas New Mexico has, they are putting additional poles in, in the downtown. I've been getting correspondence from them. I'm trying to at least keep them three to 400 feet off of 518. But like I said, they, that's their utility.
Long-term, I, I, my goal would be to bury every line out there. And if that's what we're going to do at some point, I think it'd be a good idea to start implementing rules that would, at the very least, make it difficult and unattractive for them to run lines overhead and begin to encourage them to run them underground.
So LED storefront lighting is the other topic that we discussed. Currently, we don't have any requirements regulating these lights. We are proposing to prohibit these LED storefront lights in the downtown district only. And to apply that ordinance to businesses with lights that already have them, allow them 90 days to remove them. The subcommittee and commission just feels like it detracts from the pretty decorative pedestrian lights that we're putting out and then those lights, you know, in the background is just detracting from the downtown district. This would actually be a change to the sign ordinance. So that's, that, the sign ordinance, it would be under prohibited signage. And we did look at some other cities that have done the same thing. We ran that through the traps as far as requiring business, current businesses to go ahead and remove those. Anything else?
That to the downtown district or would we want to look at doing that citywide?
If we-
Our subcommittee was just focused on downtown. That's, that's always so. So if there's a consensus for council, we need to take it further than downtown, we'll certainly take that into consideration.
And there were a couple of other exceptions in here. Open closed lighting was going to be exempted. This is the current, how we've got it currently written. And holiday lights between November and January, November 15th to January 15th will also be exempted.
If we wanted to apply it citywide, alls I needed to do is take in the downtown district out of that ordinance and it would apply to this, the entire city.
Thanks a lot, Aubrey. Is that all?
So three other items that were in your PDF spreadsheet was just relocating some language and duplicating some texts to make the downtown district easier to understand. So the buffer requirements, parking requirements, and PED modification. And that's it.
Just to be clear, this is all going to be brought back to us as individual items to be voted on, correct?
Yes, yes.
Fantastic.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
Thank you for great work. Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Let's move up to, down to item six, special recognitions and acknowledgements. Got anybody here?
Both are.
Both are here. How about item A, presentation of the Five Star Spirit Award for the fourth quarter of 2018 to Ashley Hempel, Communications Operator, Friendswood Police Department.
So if, for those of y'all that are doing a double take, yes, Ashley was here last month. She's become quite the frequent flyer for Friendswood. She was here last month in regard to the pediatric CPR incidents that took place in January. Her efforts along with that of her teams was successful in reviving a young, young boy's life. Fast, or fast forward, rewind back to November of last year. We had an incident out at Timber Creek in which a patron suffered from a cardiac arrest out at Timber Creek and a bystander witnessing the situation contacted 911 and Ash, Ashley walked them through the AED process and successfully resurrected the individual. She was nominated by a fellow coworker and EMS employee. We are grateful for Ashley and her team's efforts throughout any of these calls. She was nominated, as I said, by a fellow employee and the Five Star Spirit Award Committee recommended that she receive the award for the quarter of the year. So thank you and congratulations, Ashley.
Thank you.
Did you bring any guests with you, Ashley?
No, we, we live an hour away.
Oh.
This is an old hat for her. Comes back each month, so she was mine.
In case they watch it on TV, this would be a good time for you to say, I couldn't have done it without my family support.
Love them to death.
Love them to death. Perfect, okay. That's a check in the block. Okay, item B is presentation of the annual Friendswood Library Outstanding Educational Programming Award to Dort Coustre.
Mayor, council, I'm happy to be able to share this presentation with you this evening as well as the audience in attendance. In 2014, the Friendswood Library established an annual award to recognize an individual volunteer who has provided outstanding educational programming to the Friendswood Library community. The Friendswood Library is proud to present the 2019 Outstanding Educational Programming Award to Dort Oliverius Coustre. Dorta is a qualified mindfulness-based stress reduction teacher from Arhus University in Denmark and the University of Massachusetts. She's provided the Friendswood Library with over 20 mindfulness meditation programs this past year with attendants ranging from 20 to 40 people per program. Her programs receive high praise from members of the community. She has brought great value to the library and we look forward to her new Thursday morning series Awakening Joy. Please join me in congratulating Dorta Coustre.
If you'll allow me to suspend rules. Dr. Strand. Communication from committees and special reports, Animal Shelter Advisory Committee Annual Report given by Chair Dr. Donald Strand.
All right. Everything is rolling around, rolling along smooth like it has been the last several years. Obviously, the goal of the animal facility is to, control center is to get the animals back to their rightful owners and with the microchip system that's been in place and it's actually been updated in 2019, a lot of the animals get returned to their owners in the field, you know? So we had, there's 525 animal pickups, 55 were returned in the field because of the microchip system, another 156 were returned once they got to the facility. Besides that, 112 dogs were adopted out, 153 cats were adopted out. So they had another 1,500 calls this year, pretty much the same as last year. There was 29 calls for animal bites and there was another 409 wildlife releases as well. So everything's going along smooth. Police Department does an excellent job and, you know, Amy Castro, the chief of the volunteers is doing, you know, exceptionally well, keeping everything running smooth. That's about it. Wouldn't change a thing.
Thanks, doctor. Appreciate it. You got a quick one, Joe, or you gonna?
I can make it, I can make it as quick as you like, but, but it's five slides, it'll take probably 15 minutes to 20?
I propose we do that right after the joint public hearing before you go upstairs with your group.
Okay.
How about that?
That's great.
I'd like to take a little break now and come back at seven. All right, we'll reconvene this meeting. My council will show up. We will, they're back there. They'll hear me. Now we can start. Now four, if you guys will allow me to suspend the rules for a second, I'd like to move up item 12, which is discussion and possible action regarding concurrence with the city manager's appointment of the fire marshal, emergency management coordinator.
Mayor and council, as-
Let me get a motion first. I got a motion for-
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Motion in a second. All right, Mo.
Sure. Mayor and council, as you know, we have had recently a local legend retire from the city of Friendswood and one, Terry Byrd, who has spent 23 years with the city of Friendswood, 50 years in public safety overall. In these type of situations, typically you don't have a, a number two that's ready to take the reins with that amount of experience, but we're very fortunate here in Friendswood. Brian Mansfield joined our, our city of Friendswood back in 2000 and is currently on his 19th year with the city. He has worked every job within the fire marshal's office and the emergency management office. It is my recommendation that we appoint him as the fire marshal and director of that department as well as our emergency management coordinator.
Okay, we got a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor? What do you know, Brian? You got seven votes. Worked out.
Yeah. Got those four votes at least, right? Well, I want to thank the city manager, mayor, and council for the opportunity to continue to serve the city of Friendswood in this new role. I look forward to continuing the great work that was started by the outgoing fire marshal, Terry Byrd. We have a great staff, many of which are here today. We got our administrative assistant, Debbie Murphy. We got deputy fire marshals, Steve Roestrom and Brian Holmes in the back. Miss anybody else from the office? No. And I also have my family here to support me as well. This guy, of course, but I got my lovely wife, Heather, son Owen, Lillian, Bryn, and this is Dax. My parents are here as well. Tom and Janet Mansfield, oh, there they are, and my sister Debbie. And then we also have the police department staff here to support and we also have other agencies here that are supporting. Webster is here to support me as well. So I appreciate all the support from family, friends, and the city.
We're glad you're here, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'll go back to item seven, joint public hearing. I'll turn it over to you, Joe.
The Planning and Zoning Commission Joint Public Hearing with City Council is now called to order. We will now receive comments from the public, both oral and written, regarding possible zoning changes. The first proposed change is a zone classification change from community shopping center to downtown district of 1.8864 acres of land at One Hatcher Lane. Aubrey?
Yes, sir. This owner is requesting to change to the downtown district zoning. The property is within the established downtown district boundary and does qualify, is eligible to opt into that zoning category. If approved, the development of the property would be subject to the downtown regulations. Fees would be, development fees would be waived for any for-profit business that incorporates the downtown district requirements.
Is there an applicant that would like to speak? Seeing none. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak for making this change? Please step to the podium. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak against making this change? Please step to the podium. Seeing none. The next item for public comment is a zone classification change from single-family residential to planned unit development for a residential development. Avalon at Friendswood being 115.998 acres located along the future Friendswood Lakes Boulevard between West Ranch and Friendswood Lake subdivisions consisting of the following tracts. An 87.774 acre tract in the Mary Fabro survey and an 28.224 acre tract of tract A as conveyed to Yellowstone Mill Country Ranching LLC, oh, sorry, as conveyed to Yellowstone Hill Country Ranching LLC. Aubrey?
Yes, sir. This is a pro, a proposed planned unit development. Meta Planning and Design on behalf of Taylor Morrison Homes and the property owners is the agent on this application. They are proposing develop 206 home private gated subdivision that would consist of a variety of six, 60 to 90 foot lots. The, the development would be located on the future Friendswood Lakes Boulevard. The development of this subdivision would be contingent upon the extension of that road. So they'll need to work with, Galveston County is taking care of the expansion of that road, so they'll be responsible for coordinating that timeframe with them. The onsite detention, part of that detention, they're going to use an existing lake that's on the property and they're coordinating with an adjacent developer. Another subdivision is going to share the detention of that lake with them. And so a lot of this has still got to be worked out with construction plans and they're going to have to meet design criteria manual. All the submittals will have to go through the drainage district as well to meet the drainage criteria.
Is there an applicant that would like to speak? Please step forward.
All right, I have a presentation. Sorry. Way to get it on the screen. There we go. Okay. Good evening. I am Catherine Parker with Meta Planning and Design and I just want to take a moment to go through our proposed planned unit development for this property. We're proposing Avalon at Friendswood and it'll be located, if you look on the screen, it's located with West Ranch to the east of the project and Friendswood Lakes to the west. It's bisected by Friendswood Lakes Boulevard in the future construction of the remainder of that tract. So the developer for this Avalon product is Taylor Morrison. They're a nationally renowned home builder and developer with over 100 years of experience. They've got projects all throughout the greater Houston area and they're consistently providing high-end residential communities. Avalon is known as a gated community. The, the main components that are unique about Avalon is that it's a high-quality gated development with lakes and large lake lots and highly landscaped areas all throughout the development. You can see some of that in the pictures below showing some of the entrances and the lakes in existing Avalon developments throughout the Houston area. There's a number of them that are already existing or under construction, including Avalon at Sinka Ranch, Avalon at Riverstone, Sienna Plantations, Spring Green, and Telfair. So a lot of those- Sienna Plantation, Spring Green and Telfair. So, a lot of those I'm sure you've heard of before, but it's, it's a proven development product that Taylor Morrison has done and they want to bring it to Friendswood. So, here we've got some images of some of the models for this type of development. One of the key factors of Avalon is, as I mentioned before, the lake lots and one thing that they do is provide property along the lakes where the property line goes straight to the water's edge and that allows for an unobstructed view of the lake, which is a unique element of this Avalon product. And you can see that in the, the middle pictures on this presentation. But as you can see, the, the design and the character of the homes is, is high-end and tries to be unique and something special for, for these areas. So, in front of you now is the proposed land plan for the project. As you'll see, there's a lake on both the north side of Friendswood Lakes Boulevard and on the south. The lake to the south is existing already and it would be split with the adjacent property. And as you can see, we've got a variety of lot sizes on the plan. We're ranging from 60 by 130, 70 by 130, 80 by 130 and 90 by 130. So, the minimum proposed lot square footage is 7,800 because of the increased lot depth and it ranges all the way up to over 11,000 with 12,000 with the 90-foot by 130. So, the larger lots we have primarily around the lake and again with that property line going down extending to the water's edge. Part of the, the project also is a focus on open space and landscaped areas and amenitizing the lake frontage. So, as you can see in this development, there's a fair amount of green space and doing the calculations with both the lakes and the park areas and just general open space and landscape buffers. We're about 36 acres of the 116 acre development, so it's about 31%. And so, it helps provide visual aesthetic for residents and anyone in the area. In front of you here are the proposed regulations for the project. As far as the residential setbacks and general development regulations, we intend to be consistent with what's already approved as a part of the zoning ordinance. The primary change would be on the lot size. We're proposing a minimum square footage for each of the different lot widths, but with the plan that's currently proposed with the increased lot depth that we are providing, most of the lots would even exceed these minimums. But as far as setbacks go and parking requirements, everything would be consistent. So, the, one of the things that we had to incorporate within the PUD is for the lake lots, the allowance that we'd be able to do the lot lines to the edge of the lake. Now, that is with the caveat that there would be a drainage easement, so we'd be consistent with all of the required ordinances for maintenance firms and any development along the lake would still be in compliance with that. But we are trying to maintain the character that's unique to Avalon with the unobstructed view of the lake on these homes that are adjacent to that. One of the other elements is cul-de-sac. We're slightly increasing the maximum cul-de-sac length, but with really only one area that's impacted by that and it's where the large lots are. So, it's still a very minimal number of lots along that. It's just the constraints of the site dictated a, a need for minor variance on that part. And then again, one of the key components of Avalon is that it's a gated community. So, this, this project is proposed to be gated with private streets. There's two entrances proposed off of Friendswood Lakes Boulevard, both with gates here and here. Here we would come down and the gates would be in this area. But, so there's adequate access on either side of the development. And then, we're also incorporating just allowance for some temporary signage that would be used with the development of the project. It would all be limited to builders and lenders and would have a timeframe on it. So, that's part of the language in here. And then, as far as phasing goes, as was previously mentioned, it would all be timed with the construction of Friendswood Lakes Boulevard. So, everything would be coordinated with the completion of that as necessary. But, as it stands right now, the intent would be to develop this portion and the area around the lake down here in the first phase. And then we'd come back and finish the other side of this northern piece in Phase 2 and then the remainder of the project would be developed in Phase 3. So, again, it would all be timed with the construction of that roadway, but we don't anticipate there being more than, than three phases for these. It's just over 200 lots that's currently proposed. So, I'm available if you have any questions. We just wanted to kind of go through what all of the, the regulations we're proposing are. And as I said, you know, we're trying to stay consistent with everything that's currently proposed, but just make some modifications to allow for this unique product that we think will be really suitable here in Friendswood. So, if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer, but appreciate your time.
Great, thank you very much.
I have a quick question. What's the reason for the PUD? Friendswood has zoning ordinance for single-family residential with 90-foot lots and 90 by 130-foot lots. I don't understand why we're seeking a PUD.
It's because we're doing, we have 60-foot lots, 70-foot lots, 80-foot lots and 90-foot lots. So, it's for the-
And only 7% of the, of the lots that you're presenting are 90-foot lots, just around the-
Right.
Lake. Have you secured that agreement with the adjacent developer for that lake?
For the-
The lake right where the 90-foot lots are. Have you secured that agreement for-
That's, that's a part of the land that would be purchased as a part of the, for Taylor Morrison.
Okay.
So, it'd be under their ownership and then developed and maintained by the HOA as a part of the Avalon product.
The, there's 28 acres that, and that they don't own, but that property owner has signed off on this application and is an applicant on this application.
I'm familiar with Avalon and Cinco Ranch, so the houses that you're proposing are going to be similar to those?
Yes.
What are the lot sizes in Cinco Ranch, do you know?
I, I, I think it's pretty comparable. Most of the Avalon product has a similar range in, in lot sizes.
Well- Yeah, so, so you're going with significant number of houses that are less than 90-foot, but you, but you are, but you are having deeper depths in some of those properties, is that correct?
Correct. So, the square footage of the lots is still increased over the minimum even that we're proposing. But, one thing that I would point out with it being the lakes that we're incorporating, if we were to apply the, the base zoning regulation right now, the 90-foot lots over the whole tract, it would be like 230 lots, I think was the rough calculation. And what we're proposing is 206. So, the overall density of the whole development is still consistent with what the, the zoning ordinance requires, but by allowing this variety of lot sizes, that gives a little bit more opportunities in the market, but also allows us for the area to incorporate these lakes and be able to add this additional element to the project.
And, and what is the estimate, I know you don't know this exact, but what's the estimated price range these houses are going to be in?
I, I don't have that information right now. Yeah, I, I'm not, I don't want to promise anything on that front, but, but it would be consistent with, you know, other similar projects in the area, Avalon products in the area.
That information might be helpful to us, just letting you know.
Yeah, so just to be consistent, I've always stomped for 90-foot lots and I will continue to do so. We have approved a development in the eight years I've been up here, one that didn't meet that requirement and they were nowhere near, only 7% 90, 90-foot lots. I mean, we have a lot size standard that we like to adhere to and I think that the one thing that the citizens in the community appreciate is a government that's consistent. And I think that as a governing body, we need to remain consistent. And so, this is going to come up later in the meeting. I just don't think that it is good business to be inconsistent. We just dealt with a developer down 528 towards Alvin and we made them go back and do all 90-foot lots and they did. I think it would be responsible on our parts to do the same thing here.
I have one question. How did you come up with these percentages on different lot sizes?
Well, the, the location of the various products is somewhat dictated by the constraints on the site, but the primary focus was to ensure that the lots around the lake, the higher amenity were the larger lots and then working within the constraints of the remaining property. But, it also is all kind of dictated by the market and what we feel is, is most likely to be successful with the areas around it, so.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak for making this change? Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak against making this change? Okay, seeing no further comment, the joint public hearing is now adjourned and the Planning and Zoning Commission will move upstairs to the second floor conference room at the conclusion of the next presentation.
Thanks, Joe. I'd like you to stick around if you could and jump down to your item here, which is your Planning and Zoning Commission annual report.
Okay. Okay, great. Okay, thank you, Mayor, and members of city council for giving me the opportunity to discuss all of the really exciting things that the Planning and Zoning Commission did in 2018. I'm also going to touch briefly on some things we're working on in 2019. I'd like to, to begin by first recognizing that the, the reasons that we were able to accomplish so much that you're going to hear about shortly in 2018, it's because of the dedication and the hard work of the, the entire Planning and Zoning team. Especially, though, I have to say, and no surprise, right, that especially to the city staff that supports the Planning and Zoning Commission. Aubrey, Becky, Mary Kay, without them, we would have not gotten nearly, nearly much done last year. So, hats off to them for all their, their help and assistance. Our current slate of commissioners is listed on the title page here. They're all volunteers. Brett Banfield, Richard Clark, Eric Gunther, Lisa Lundquist, myself, Joe Matranga, Marcus Perry and Richard Sassen. Also like to recognize our council liaison, Sally Branson, Carl Gusterson, and appreciate all the help that, that they provide. I mentioned the exciting things that, that we were working on and I got a few Snickers, I think. Yeah, yeah, a little around you, yeah, yeah. But, so I thought I would actually start off on what I think is just, you know, and a really exciting topic. And that is plats. I mean, that's the really big drawings, it's got easements, it's got right-ofaways. I mean, that's, that's really exciting stuff, right? At least, well, at least Becky has thought so when I've met with her about them. But, okay, maybe not so exciting, but really, really important. Many of our major land projects in Friendswood start out in the early stages with a preliminary plat. And I've shown an example of one here that was just mentioned, Georgetown. So, that's the preliminary plat, that what it looked like for Georgetown. We've also, we approved six preliminary plats from, and you can list them, see there, Sterling Creek, Clear Creek Community Church. We approved, you know, after going through the preliminary stage, they go to final, we've approved eight final plot, plats and replats from various subdivisions around Friendswood that you've heard about. Friendswood Trails, Arbor Gate, Flying Leaf Estates. So, after plats, a lot of the commercial businesses, one of their next stages we'd see is commercial site plans. So, Planning and Zoning approved seven commercial site plans. There's an example of one for Friendswood Dermatology, one of the site plans that we approved. And you can see the, the rest there of all, all seven. We approved four amendments and extensions, tires by design, the, the Bancorp ATM, property on Heritage Drive and then the Benzii Garage condominiums you can see as well. So, in addition, one of the other obligations of Planning and Zoning, besides approving plats, is to make recommendations to city council. And you can see that we made five zone change recommendations. I've shown one of the zoning maps and we've seen more of those lately, but that's the one for 3099 West Parkwood. And we can see, we recommended a change from light industrial to light industrial with a special use permit, one of the many that, that you've seen coming out of Planning and Zoning. And, and the essence of time, won't read through them all, but we also, in the process, we also recommended to vacate three right-ofways and easements throughout 2018. So, you can see various reasons, property owners will look to, and the first one is an example on Stephen Luke Lane. They were making some modifications to the house post Harvey, but the builder had left a, an old, unused, never-used drainage easement. So, as part of our obligation, we looked into that, we made a recommendation, recommendation to council and council approved vacating that one and, and the two others as well. Other 2018 P&amp;Z activities. We did welcome two new commissioners in 2018 to maintain our full complement of seven on the commission. We held 21 formal commission meetings and over 10, we lost track a little bit, but over 10 subcommitting meetings. So, we conducted the annual review of the permitted uses table that we talked about, Aubrey talked about earlier, and the NAICS codes, made those updates that are listed there, provided recommendations to city council on the mayor, major thoroughfare, thoroughfare plan update, and then the stairs on the elevated homes ordinance. Post Harvey, some of the homes had to be raised, I think everybody remembers, and then the front stairs then would stick and come past the build lines. So, we made recommendations to council on that. Study of land use assumptions, capital improvements plan, and then impact fees update were all recommendations to council. We had three commissioners and two staff members attend the American Planning Association Conference in Galveston. I was one of those commissioners and I appreciate the support for allowing us to go and do that. We always learn a lot from those conferences and take away a lot of action items for us to come back and, and always looking to get better as a commission. We formed, as you've heard about earlier, formed a downtown district subcommittee to review the design criteria for new and redevelopment in the downtown area. And then we held a retreat to establish what our priorities were and what, what are our goals for the commission. So, that was very helpful. That led to some of the things in 2018 that we worked on, but it also led to some of these 2019 things that we're currently working on. Just to briefly go through them, we are looking at reviewing and updating the zoning ordinance, subdivision ordinance and the design criteria manual as part of this scenic city that's still ongoing in 2019. Review and updating the official zoning map, which was, as you can see, last updated in 2015. We're working on updating the future land use map, general update to zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinances. And we're evaluating the need to update the Friendswood comprehensive plan. It's been many years since that's been updated. We're not saying we're, we're doing it, we're just going to look at it and see if it makes sense or not and then come back with recommendations and work with council on that. Improve the communications with FDEDC, consider changing the joint public hearings with city council to separate public hearings, and then consider changing the, the commission meeting dates. The last four of these all were generated in our retreat. So, that was a very worthwhile way to, to kind of put these together and put these as a priority. I'm sure this isn't all we're going to do in 2019, but it's at least what's currently on, on our plate. So, with that, that pretty much concludes my prepared remarks and thank you again for giving me the time to, you know, it's, it's exciting to me and we all, we have a, you know, really good group of folks on the commission right now and look forward to continue working with you. Any comments, any questions?
I just want to thank you, Joe, and all the commissioners for what you guys do. I think most people understand that, that we're all- I think most people understand that, that we're all volunteers up here, but, you know, we up here on the dais couldn't do what we're doing because we're talking about work that you're doing at the planning and zoning level, every meeting that we have up here. There's not a city council meeting where we're not talking, voting on something that you guys have worked on. So we appreciate it. We couldn't, we couldn't, you know, do the things that we're doing without you guys. And we appreciate you going the extra mile, really, breaking up into subcommittees and evaluating things that, you know, we didn't really probably have the foresight to ask you to do. You had, you took that on your own and realized there was a need in several cases, and we, we do appreciate it. And Aubrey, Becky, you guys are stars, so thank you for putting up with all these people and guiding them and, you know, holding their hands and all that kind of stuff. And of course, Mary Kay, thank you too for your support. So, thank you.
No, thank you.
Your paycheck's in the mail. You know, I told Bill Bender a couple of weeks ago, I told Bill, I said, "Bill, I've been on city council for almost three years, I haven't seen a paycheck yet." He said, "Well, Mike, I can, I can send you a picture of one." Thank you. Yeah. Nothing in front of it, so. All right, we'll move on. Get back on track. Item eight, communications from the public. To comply with the provisions of the Open Meetings Act, the City Council may not deliberate on items discussed under this agenda item. The council may refer this item to the city manager or direct this item to be placed on the next regular council agenda. PowerPoint presentations are not conducted during the citizen comment period. Out of respect for those speaking during public comment, please refrain from any outbursts or interjections to include, but not limited to, applause and/or disparaging noises from the audience. Doing so discourages others from voicing their thoughts and opinions and disrupts the meeting. I have one card. Forgive me, Alyssa Jaden? Alyssa Jaden?
While you're coming up, I'll just explain the rules. You have three minutes. When you're down to one minute, I'll show you the yellow card. When you see the red card, that means your three minutes are up.
Okay, yes ma'am, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, good evening and thank you, Mayor Foreman and City Council members. My name is Alyssa Jaden and I'm president of Friendswood Youth Baseball. Our Friendswood Youth Baseball program currently sits at 718 registered players. We start scrimmage games this week. Despite the weather, we are on track to kick off our season. In August, I spoke about the growth of our league. Since then, we have progressed with improvements at the ballpark. We have renovated two fields, hired a professional company to help improve the playing surfaces of our entire complex, and we currently are in the process of improving two main safety concerns at our ballpark. With the 2019 season, we will now play every night of the week on our front entrance field F5. F5 sits directly next to the front main walkway. Every person enters and leaves Renwick Park through this main entrance and with our 11, 12-year-old boys now playing the two games a night on this field. As a league, we decided to fund a netting project to improve the safety of our entrance. Nets of Texas will construct a 40-foot barrier fence to cover the walkway along with an improved no sightlines backstop with a 40-foot coverage. The project totaled $36,500 and is paid for by the league. We are in the process of scheduling construction. Our second safety concern is for our seven-year-old children who will play on F2. F2 sits directly next to F3. The fields are so close that the dugouts touch and our fans share seating space. While these fields have always been constructed this way, with the 2019 season, we will now have younger players playing next to our oldest and most developed athletes. This season, we have grown in both the youngest and oldest divisions. While we have 44 teams age eight and under playing across the complex, we also have two teams in the 13, 14 Pony Division. The Pony Division players will compete on the field directly next to our seven-year-olds. Currently, our seven-year-olds are exposed to batted balls from our 13, 14-year-old players. This is a reason for my attendance tonight, to kindly request for the city's consideration for funding of a project to help us improve the safety of our environment at Renwick Park. Nets of Texas has provided us with a quote in artwork for a barrier netting fence system that will protect our seven U players from any batted balls that go onto our coach pitch field. The quote is for $29,000 for the full system. As a league, we are required to care for everything within the fence lines of Renwick Park. All of our capital improvements are funded by our league fundraisers and our generous community business sponsors. From 2012 to 2019, as a league, we have fundraised and spent $490,838 towards Renwick Park capital improvements and projects and general care of the fields. We are dedicated to building up and maintaining our community park. We understand that netting is not covered by parks and rec like Chain Link is. We are committed to the responsibility of, of future maintenance projects. We will fundraise and allocate money to care for the netting if any future issues arrive. We appreciate your consideration to help us improve the safety of our ballpark and we are looking forward to a great 2019 season and serving our community. Thank you.
Good timing. Thanks, Alyssa. All right. Item nine, city managers' report.
Yes, sir, Mayor and Council. I will keep this brief. Good timing on this. This upcoming March 23rd, Saturday, March 23rd, will be our annual youth sports day in which there'll be a parade that starts around nine o'clock in that morning from Heritage Drive off of 518 Friendswood Drive to Renwick Park. This will kick off our Little League, our Pony League season as well as our girl softball season. First pitches will be thrown out by a council member, Gustafson, and councilwoman Branson. So I hope y'all are stretching and warming up your arms in these next couple of weeks. With respect to Hurricane Harvey, the city recently received a $48,000 deductible reimbursement check from FEMA. This is for our lift stations and shadow properties that we expended immediately after Hurricane Harvey. We're also close to finalizing our project on the old Deepwood site, which is the old Public Works facility, old animal control and parks facility. As you know, our Public Works and Parks Department are currently operating out of the old food line, the Black Hawk facility. So we're hopeful to get that project squared away here in the next couple of weeks. I say a couple of weeks, six to eight weeks most likely. This past week, y'all have seen a number of safety concerns pop up on social media related to Greenbrier sidewalk. I do want to clarify, there will be curbs in between the sidewalk and the, and the current roadway. The project is under construction, it is not complete. So if you were to engage anybody or anybody ask you that question, by all means, feel free to explain there will be a barrier. The barrier will also be outfitted with reflective paint to help for visibility in the evening. Encourage, as always, encourage folks to contact the city and not necessarily believe what they read on social media. Lastly, we came to find out there was vandalism at Surface Water Plant Number Two at our generator in which copper wiring was stolen from the generator, making it inoperable. I want to thank our staff, our Public Works staff, working with the contractor late Friday as well as Saturday to get the generator back and operational. So we've seen quite a bit of vandalism activities throughout the city at Centennial Park, at, here in Stevenson Park. I don't know what the reason for the current uptick in vandalism is, but we, we are working to get cameras at more facilities so that we can catch culprits in action. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Okay. Item 11, discussion of possible action regarding approving appointments, reappointments to the following boards, committees, and commissions. Item A, keep Friendswood beautiful, appointment of Justin Stopenall? Pretty close? To fill the unexpired term of Frank Garza, who resigned with a term expiring in November 2021, and appointment of Brent Bell to fill the unexpired term of Chiquita Taylor, who resigned with a term expiring November 2021.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Is Brent here also? Justin's here. Justin, I always see you with Ashley. I'm not, not spreading any rumors, but I know you guys are affiliated with Pony League, so I know, I know the connection. You do. So all in favor? Okay, that was easy. All right, item 13, discussion of possible action regarding the approval of an amended and restated cost-sharing agreement relating to the 42-inch southeast transmission line. Motion in a second. Renee, looks like you're going to give us some updates.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Councilman Mayor. Before you is the consideration for approval for the amended, restated cost-sharing agreement. If you recall, this agreement came before some of you in 2016, but this is an amended version of that. It said, as City of Friendswood, we're the, one of the co-parks for the southeast waterfication plant. This line in itself is a transmission line that is one of two transmission lines that comes to our city of Friendswood. This is for the replacement of the 42-inch. We're one of eight co-parks on this line. And what this does is, it's an agreement that goes from phase one to phase two and three. Phase two, which will be also for the, as far as the design, engineering related to it, and then phase three creeps into construction. This has the proposed amounts, it's an estimated amount right now for construction. Our portion of this is roughly $12.5 million. And it's broken up into different cash calls, this one being for this year for us.
And just as a reminder for Mayor and Council, we talked about this at length during the utility rates discussion, this was one of the main drivers for those rates. This is our, our main surface water line into the city of Friendswood that supplies all of our drinking water.
Thanks, Renee. Okay. Motion in a second. All in favor? You arms were blocked. We don't want to be like Flint. Okay. Item 14, discussion of possible action regarding assisting the Friendswood Pony Baseball League with the installation of field netting at Renwick Park.
I make a move.
Got a motion in a second. Any discussion? Carl, thanks for, for bringing this group to us and discussing this.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate what Alyssa mentioned before. I was at their board meeting last month and I'm listening to a discussion where they already committed over $100,000 into maintenance and improvements into the fields for this year, but they were still short some money. And they were actually having a debate about whether we, we do this fencing or this netting project or this netting project and it, you know, do we protect mom and grandma walking into the park or do we look after the seven-year-olds back here? I thought it might be a good idea if we could chip in and help out and make sure everybody's safe. This is a safety issue. It's a safety issue that's associated with the growth of the league. I believe they've got 18 T-ball teams this year. This was the number I heard. So, so I guess we may be worse somewhat to blame here in the city and that the growth of the city has led to growth of the league and a couple of improvements that they need to make, so I'm going to support it.
I'd just like to comment that that's where I started volunteering for the community like 12 years ago, was on Little League Board of Directors. So unless you've been involved or you've had kids go through it, the, the Little League Baseball Organization, or now the Pony League Baseball Organization, really is, you know, the example that I think all youth sports organizations in our community would like to follow and should follow and that, you know, we never, ever, I, I don't think anybody has any idea the amount of funds that Little League Baseball expends on public property. It's a city park. And I can remember when, was it Allison or whatever that came through? We had, you know, we had press boxes knocked down that were completely rebuilt through volunteers and funding that Little League, that we had gathered as Little League. And so everything that you see at that park, for the most part, is maintained by them. Everything that you see, the improved batting cages, the pitching lanes, the warm-up lanes outside of the fields, all of that stuff has been provided by that group. And so it actually lessens the burden on the taxpayers because the people that are utilizing the field are paying to maintain the fields. And it meets their needs. And I think that not enough, you know, credit, you know, or recognition is, is given to you guys and what y'all do out there. So I just personally wanted to say thank you for continuing what I happened to be a part of 12 years ago. And before that, I played there 40 years ago. So it's, it's a great organization, it's just a great deal and, and the city should be very, very proud of what our Little League youth sports baseball program has done for our community. So thank you guys for what you do.
Yeah, I'm 100% supportive. We've done this with other sports leagues. We've, we've paid for stuff and this is a great thing to invest in the community. I do have one question. Would this come out of the 90-day, over 90-day fund?
This would, the over 90-day fund, yes, general fund balance.
I also agree with everything that John said. My husband and I volunteered 30-something years ago with, with that. But I happen to be a ball magnet. Any, any sporting event I attend, a loose ball, foul ball finds me and I will be out there with a grandchild, so I am very thankful for this personally. So I definitely support it and thank you for all your work.
Yeah, I'll just end up maybe and say, this was kind of an easy one to get behind as a council now. You know, for those of you that don't know, we do have this agreement with, with Pony League now that they use Renwick Park, but they also, in order to use it, they provide most of the upkeep and, and maintenance and all that stuff. But, you know, when you read their, their spreadsheet and see that this year, they, the league is investing $132,000 worth of, what do you call them? Upgrades, improvements, safety-related things. And, and they're $29,000 short to do something that they really need for safety, it was kind of easy to say, yeah, we, we need to do that. Because you guys are putting so much work and effort and your own funding into that, it's easy to get behind. So that, all in favor? Moving on, resolutions? I saw it, yeah. Sometimes Sally blocks you, I don't know.
On purpose.
Only when she wants to.
Oh, I should be offended by that.
Yeah, that's right. Okay. Resolution. 2019-05, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Friendswood, Texas authorizing and approving the 2019 Homeland Security Grant Program application. Motion in a second. Want to tell us what nano drones are, Brian?
They're, they're actually interior, they're interior drones. So basically, we have the grant application, we meet with the fire department, police department, Public Works, parks to come up with projects. One of the projects were, was to come up with interior drones that would help identify suspects or folks and, and that are in an interior building. And also, it would keep harm away from officers being the first ones there. So it's a project that everybody was in support of, so we're working on the application right now.
Any questions? All in favor? Okay. Resolution R 2019-06, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Friendswood, Texas authorizing and approving the 2019 Homeland Security Grant Program application.
Motion to approve. Motion to approve.
Motion in a second.
And this one's for a mounted camera trailer system. I know the city manager mentioned earlier, we're having some spot problems at some of the parks. This could be used at parks or at, at events or anything that we need to help, to help deter issues. So it's another project that the group was in support of.
Sounds good. Question, discussion, all in favor? Thanks, Brian. You gonna have a different shirt tomorrow? I don't want to see deputy fire marshal anymore. All right. Resolution 2019-07, a resolution of the City of Friendswood regarding tax assessment and collection services. Have a motion? Motion in a second.
Real quick, Mayor and Council, this is a formality. We entered into an interlocal agreement with Galveston County in 2018. Under a certain set of prices, the county's been able to reduce those per parcel prices for the Galveston County side of the city as well as the Harris County side of the city and has asked for a resolution reflecting those changes.
Okay. And remind us, how long are we on contract with Galveston County?
It ends in July 31st of 2021.
Okay. All right. All in favor? Getting cheaper tax assessments? Okay, great. Resolution 2019-08, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Friendswood, Texas designating the mayor as the city's representative and seeking eligible grant funds under the Emergency Federal Law Enforcement Assistance Grant Program and authorizing the submission of such grant application to the Criminal Justice Division of the Office of the Governor. Motion?
Second.
Motion in a second.
Just a quick explanation from Mayor and Council. Just a quick explanation from mayor and council. Following the tragedy that took place May of 2018 at Santa Fe High School, our police department increased their presence at all local schools, both in Friendswood ISD as well as CCISD, and we incurred quite a bit of overtime costs for doing that service. Thankfully, both school districts helped split that cost and share some of the burden of that activity. The state recently announced a grant to reimburse us for those costs, and we're applying for those funds. Based on the funding that we get back, we'll give the school district their pro rata share back.
Thank you. All in favor? Great. Moving down to ordinances. A, number, ordinance number 2019-05, second and final reading of an ordinance amending appendix C zoning, section eight supplementary district regulations, subsection I landscaping and screening requirements. Have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion in a second. All in favor? Opposed? Five-two. Okay. Ordinance number 2019-06, second and final reading of an ordinance amending appendix C zoning, section 7.5, community overlay district, subsection three, screening, subsection D, refuge, storage areas, dumpsters, and all related activities. Have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor? Opposed? Five-two. Ordinance number T. 2019-07, second and final reading of an ordinance amending appendix B subdivisions, section four, parkland dedication, subsection F, additional requirements, subsection two, guidelines used in designing parks and adjacent development, adding subsection G, identifying impervious cover requirements for the open space area. All in favor? Sorry, let me get a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor? Opposed? Five-two. Ordinance 2019-08, second and final reading of an ordinance amending the zoning classification for a tract or parcel containing 1.91 acres located at 104 Whispering Pines Avenue, Friendswood, Texas, by granting a zone classification change from single-family residential to downtown district. Motion in a second. All in favor? Seven-nothing. Okay. Ordinance 2019-10, first reading of an ordinance amending the zoning classification.
Mayor, I don't think we have a recommendation yet on remaining items.
Reading away. Let me jump down then to G. Ordinance number T. 2019-12, first and final reading of an ordinance adopting budget amendment five to the original general budget of the city for fiscal year 2018-2019. Motion in a second. All in favor? Seven-nothing. You want to jump down, or you want to do communication? We can do communication. Communications from the mayor and council. Start with you, Carl.
Had the opportunity to attend the Texas Music Fest put on by the Friends of Downtown Friendswood this weekend, or this Saturday. Lovely time, nice crowd, and I hope those of you made it out to enjoy it, and those of you who didn't, I'm going to do it again next year. It'll be the fifth year. At least I hope they are. That's the plans. And it was a very, very good time, well-attended. That's really about all I've got right now.
Thanks, Carl. Mayor Protem Scott. Councilmember Graffon.
No. I just wanted to thank Morad and the city staff for getting all of this information to us a full week in advance of this meeting. I really do appreciate that. That really takes a load off of Sunday for me, and I'd just like to mention that we will, I believe virtually all of us, will be going to Austin on March the 6th, on Wednesday, and we're going to try to get as much face time as we can with all the representatives at the state level, to see if we can get them to help us with some of the problems that we have with our Clear Creek watershed and Trigger Creek, Cowards Creek, Mary's Creek. We really need to get in front of them, and we know that y'all are frustrated, and please know that we're frustrated, too. So we're working. We're working for you, and we're working as hard as we can to get in front of them, as many people as we can, to get some help on that Clear Creek watershed.
Councilmember. Ally?
I just want to say congrats again to Brian Mansfield. I'm super happy for him. 18 years already, so he knows the culture. He knows the job. I'm just very excited about that, so thank you. Congrats, Brian.
Well, first, I'd like to congratulate Councilman Graffon for being unopposed, and so we'll see up here for a couple more years. Just wanted to let you know that I have been elected the second vice president, see if I get this right, the Texas Association of Mayors, Council Members, and Commissioners, which is an affiliate of the TML. It's not a position I applied for. I got voluntored, told to apply for something else by the mayor, and I wasn't even there that day, and they switched and elected me this, so I don't, but you can all bow. I'm a second vice president.
The cream rises, Steve, you know. Anything else? Well, I'd just kind of echo what Robert Graffon said about going to Austin. I made that trip last week with a group of mayors that we have been collaborating with around Clear Lake, mostly all the mayors in this region, been working together, and we kind of marched up there to Austin and had a chance to visit with a bunch of members, and it was very productive. I came back thinking, being glad that, one, that I went, but secondly, glad that I don't have to make the drive to Austin very often. So it was good, and I'm glad that you guys are getting ready to go up and do that Wednesday. I think it'll be very productive. So thank you for doing that.
I'll be driving Sally's SUV.
Okay.
And I'll be riding shotgun.
Okay.
And I'll be taking a nap in the back.
Okay.
I doubt it.
And I'm going to ride in Carl's car.
Secondly, I wanted to remind everybody, or mention to everybody, that tomorrow, we're kicking off our citizens advisory team to look at the potential of holding a bond election this fall. Up on the screen, if you watch, there are some of the things that the 2013 bond election supported and voters voted on, and now we have here in Friendswood, new fire station, library, you saw the library improvements. So we had over 40 people already volunteer to sit on this team. We're going to kick it off tomorrow night. We'll get a lot of people involved and let the citizens of Friendswood talk and figure out what they feel like the city needs, if we do need an upcoming bond election, what we need. So there's Lake Friendswood. Thanks for putting this together, Jeff. Appreciate it. Yeah. So I think it was a very successful bond campaign back in 2013. We'd like to kind of run it the way that they ran it back then and get citizen involvement, and then we'll go from there. We'll see what they recommend to us, and we'll move forward on it. So that's all I wanted to say. Maron?
Moving back to ordinances, we do have a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission on item E under ordinances. They voted unanimously recommending in favor of the project.
Okay, let me read that one again. Ordinance T. 2019-10, first reading of an ordinance amending the zoning classification for a tract or parcel containing 1.8864 acres located at 1 Hatcher Lane, Friendswood, Texas, by granting a zone classification change from community shopping center to downtown district.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Item F is still being discussed at length. I don't anticipate getting a recommendation this evening.
Sounds good. Okay, we'll move down to item 18, the consent agenda. I'll let councilmember Rocky.
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion and pull item D off the consent agenda.
Okay, do I get to?
Make the motion for all of them other than D.
D. I'll second that motion. Okay. All in favor of everything but D? All right. Item D, do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion, item D.
Second.
Let me explain this one. We're going to change around the meeting next month. Our meeting next month is on April 1st, which is April Fool's Day, but nonetheless, we're going to put all the rest of the agenda up front, and we're going to start the workshop period at 7:00. And the reason we're going to do that is because the Drainage Subcommittee is going to be reporting out the majority of their recommendations at that time, and we want to have plenty of time, and we wanted to have it at a time that most of the public could attend. So with the mayor's permission, we reshuffled it around so that at 7:00, we'll be doing the workshop item on the drainage, so we have enough time, and like I said, there's, people can get off work and come in and attend.
I think it's a great plan. You got a motion in a second? All in favor?